Welcome, everybody. Today is Wednesday, April 23rd. This is Binghamton City Council Business Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Middleton. Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye. Meet President.
Councilmember Rathmel.
Present.
Councilmember Matavetsky.
Present.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Present.
Councilmember President Dundon.
Present. Can I get a motion to approve the last minutes, meetings minutes, please?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have an emotion in a second? Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, are we all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So with me being out, being ill, does anybody have any reports from any committees?
Board. We had a board meeting. So Traffic Board had a I emailed council about it, but for the public, we had a special meeting regarding the Oak Street raised pedestrian crosswalks slash whatever we're calling it. But basically in function, it will be a raised crosswalk. We were able to pass that through. It will be a pilot for one year or with the ability of the city to remove it sooner if it seems to not be withstanding use, weather, et cetera. So that's the the board update. So it was passed in time for the Broom County Health Department to move forward on purchases of the materials which the grant covers.
The Planning Committee met on April 15th to discuss the proactive rental housing inspection program legislation that was introduced last month. I think in terms of representing discussion, we had a conversation about next steps. Initially, the goal has been to identify any legal concerns, working with Corporation Council because that's been a primary barrier to implementation in the past. And in addressing those concerns with Corporation Council, the goal is to move toward meeting with Mayor Cram and Supervisor Schleider and reducing the burden on Supervisor Schleider to address those legal concerns and instead focus on the implementation, the logistics, the database, the software, those aspects of the program as it has been introduced. We do plan on scheduling a town hall in mid-May. No date determined yet, but specifically to get feedback from residents, those who might be impacted, anyone who has thoughts, experience, feelings, and want to come to share regarding the rental housing inspection program. So that'll be forthcoming as soon as we land on a date.
Anybody else? So for the appointment part, the City Council is accepting CDAC's recommendation to remove Rebecca Porter from her position on CDAC. And I know Councilmember Murray will be looking to fill that position as soon as possible. We do not have any public hearings to set or any public hearings tonight, so we'll go to the public comment position. Residents wishing to submit public comment may do so electronically by emailing their comments prior to 1:00 PM on the day of the meeting to clerk@cityofbinghampton.gov or in person during the meeting. If anybody would like to come down now and speak at public comment, please do so. Hi Elaine, can you state your name and if you live or work in the city of Binghamton?
My name is Elaine. No, I don't work, but I am a retiree. First thing I'm gonna say is the good news is that the state judges, all of them, in New York State and state prosecutors, all of them, they did do due diligence. They right told federal government, they're not gonna pay any more federal taxes to them, nor do you guys have to pay federal taxes to the government ever again. But they'll work it out where everybody gives the federal money they normally would give to the government to state judges. So state judges can pay those workers directly. They got their jobs back from the New York State judges, which helped them get their jobs back on a federal level. But there's still a lot of people who need their jobs back, and I feel in the other states are gonna follow our lead once again, which is a good thing. That's why I say talk to closest state judge, closest to you, to make sure there's more protection around our workers. We cannot take this chance of this happening ever again to our federal workers. They're protectable. We need to protect our state workers, county workers, and city workers. Now, our job is not done. The ones that are not voted in are the vulnerable ones. We have to protect them. And we gotta protect Board of Education being hampered over again because they didn't just impact pre-K, pre-head start, head start kindergarten, 12th grade, but also the schools, the colleges and universities, because soon as international students arrived, their visas were being canceled on without their permission. So the federal government, once again intervened, put their nose in where it didn't belong on our students. And that is a very bad thing to follow it. Because when Ronald Reagan did it, it was bad policy. When Trump does it, it's still a bad policy, and his administration are looking at charges. The federal judges don't like that. And they ain't nobody make mad. Those federal judges and federal prosecutors, same thing as state judges and state prosecutors, they're not in this mess with. He thinks because the Supreme Court gave him immunity, he can do whatever he wants and not have to wait for people to get it passed. It doesn't work like that. Just because they gave him immunity because on official acts, doesn't give him the license to bypass legislation on city level, county level, state level, and federal level. Still would have to go through those chain of commands to get it passed. And he allowed to override everybody else's rights. And that's what he's doing. He's steamrolling all of everybody else's rights. But through reelection officials, a president can either veto or pass. That's it. He's not allowed to sit at our meetings and make the executive order because that is breaking laws. But they'll pass and let somebody else talk.
Thank you so much. Anybody else like to come down and speak during public comment? Good evening. Please state your name and if you live or work in the city of Binghamton.
It is now. Alright, so hey, thanks for hearing me out today. My name's Bobby Moreno. I live on Matthew Street, 191 Matthew Street. Me and my fiance are the two homeowners who are looking to purchase 193 Matthew Street. We knew that the vote was tonight, so I just kinda wanted to come down. I know we already submitted a letter last week, but just kinda, you know, wanted to be here for the vote and just kinda tell you a little bit about ourselves. So I'm an native Buffalonian. I met Lauren, my fiance, a couple of years, or couple, eight years ago now, at Lost Dog. Time goes fast. And, you know, we're lucky enough to buy a house in Binghamton. We love the community. We live at 191 Matthew Street. Like I said, we have awesome neighbors. Our neighbor Julie is here tonight, too. We just kinda take care of each other. We have a beautiful corner of the, you know, west side. And we kinda see this as our opportunity to help keep that space beautiful. It's kind of a space that we look to like, you know, maybe have a garden, plant some flowers, and eventually have our kids, you know, play, break bread with our neighbors, and just, you know, keep Binghamton a beautiful place to live. So that's really all I have to say. I don't wanna take up too much of your time, but just kinda wanted to be here for the vote, and I appreciate you guys letting me speak and hope you'll consider approving our request to purchase.
Thank you so much. Anybody else like to come now? Good evening. Could you please state your name and if you live or work in the city of Binghamton?
Eric. Good evening, council members. My name is Julie Sager. I reside at 176 Matthew Street diagonal to Bobby and Lauren. I've lived there approximately 21 years. I did send kind of a detailed letter to City Council and to Councilmember Middleton. If you, if you want, I could just read it to you, and it is, it really says everything. Thank you. Give me one second here. I'm reaching out to you to support the sale of the property at 193 Matthew Street to the owners of the property at 191 Matthew Street, Robert Moreno and Lauren Bucci. Our small street between Grand Boulevard and Main Street is a lovely charming block of well taken care of, single family craftsmen, west side homes who take pride in their neighborhood. The building that was condemned and now demolished at 193 Matthew Street was not only a longtime eyesore, but a major source of fear, anxiety, pushing back, calls to the city, calls to the police, and ultimately the fire department. The building had a long history of drugs, two meth lab fires, which ultimately was the final demise of the building. Sadly, the children who played in the neighborhood started pointing out hypodermic needles to me and telling me that their parents were selling their house because Grand Boulevard and Matthew Street were no longer a good pla- was no longer a good place to live. Cars with loud music were coming and going all hours of the night, picking up and dropping off drugs and even prostitutes. It wasn't that unusual for a strange car to pull up in front of my home and do a drug deal and even blatantly use their product right in front of my house. There is no actual parking for the building, and it's a very small street. There was no dumpster for the buildings. The mountains of trash were sloppily and incorrectly put out on the curb to attract rats and rodents on the wrong day to sit until someone called code. In later active years of the building, I started receiving notices that there were convicted sex offenders living there. The young girls living directly across the street became afraid to play hopscotch and ride their bikes out in front of their home. We had a spree of break-ins and burglaries, and frankly, I knew the source. Tenants from that building were obviously watching the coming and goings of the working people on the block and knew when and when we were all leaving and coming back from work. When the building ultimately self-destructed and was condemned and demolished, the good neighbors at 191 Matthews planned on buying the plot to extend their very small yard and plant some trees as a boundary from Main Street, plant a garden and add to the beauty of our neighborhood, and even let our close neighbors' children use it to play ball. We are a close knit neighborhood and would very much appreciate an easy purchase of this property. Thank you so much for your time and consideration and support, council members. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else for public comment?
We didn't get any in the mail, did we?
So we didn't get any, we didn't receive any public comment through, oh, come on down. State your name and if you live or work in the city of Binghamton.
My name's Randy. I live in Binghamton. About that 193 Matthew Street, I mean, that place has had a long history of like all sorts of bad things going in and out of there. I mean, literally, like, I knew people that used to live there, and they didn't really care for it, and then they wound up wanting to get out of there and all that other stuff. So I mean, as far as like a sale goes, probably that would be for the best. But like, you know, the only thing I would say is like, how do you keep the criminals from going back in there, though? I mean, that, that, that would be the only thing. Because I mean, that place is a long history of, like, you know, bad things and bad people going in there. And that's all I wanna say. Alright, thanks.
Well, we didn't receive any public comment electronically. I don't believe anybody else. So we'll be moving on from public comment. We do not have a mayoral veto to review. We have no second red legislation. We're moving on to first red legislation, introductory to ordinance 025-31, considered in planning, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Rathmel.
Do I, quick question, point of order, do I need to recognize the seeker motion first?
Yes.
Okay.
We should do.
So.
So I now recognize Councilmember Rathmel for the purposes of seeker concerning introductory ordinance 025-31, an ordinance to authorize the sale of 193 Matthew Street.
Thank you, Council President. The following seeker motions are in reference to the legislation before us, introductory ordinance 025-31, an ordinance to authorize the sale of 193 Matthew Street. I make a motion to declare, first, I make a motion to declare City Council as lead agency under seeker.
Do I have a second?
A second, I'm sorry.
Have an emotion in a second? Can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmel.
Aye.
Councilmember Matavetsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Murray.
Aye.
Council President Dundon. Thank you, that's seven zero.
Okay, I would now like to make a motion to identify the property as unlisted under seeker.
Having a motion, do I hear a second?
The action as unlisted, not the property.
To identify the action as unlisted under seeker. Thank you.
Having a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second? Can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmel.
Aye.
Councilmember Matavetsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh. Councilmember Middleton. Councilmember Murray.
Aye.
Council President Dundon. Thank you, that is seven zero.
Okay, third, I make a motion to issue a negative declaration under seeker for the following reasons. The proposed sale will not conflict with an adopted land use planners zoning regulations. The proposed sale will not impair the character or quality of the existing community. The proposed sale will not have an impact on a critical environmental area. The proposed sale will not impact traffic or infrastructure, energy use, or water and sewer infrastructure. The proposed sale will not negatively impact important historic resources. The proposed sale will not result in an adverse impact to natural resources, erosion, and flooding or human health.
Having a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Seeker moves, oh, we have to do a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Rathmel.
Aye.
Councilmember Matavetsky. Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh. Councilmember Mokun. Councilmember Murray.
Aye.
Council President Dundon.
Aye.
Thank you, that's seven zero.
Seeker moves forward. I now recognize Councilmember Rathmel for the purpose of a motion concerning introductory ordinance 025-31, which is an ordinance to authorize the sale of 193 Matthew Street.
My, we've said this a lot tonight. I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to adopt introductory ordinance 025-31, considered in planning, an ordinance to authorize the sale of 193 Matthew Street.
I'll second.
Have an emotion in a second? Does anybody have any discussion?
Um, I guess I'll, I'll start. I had a chance to speak with both of the people who, well, my constituents from the best district that came down tonight to talk about the issues that were previously on Matthew Street and some of the things that they wanna do with it, and I'm very excited and I'm really happy to support this. So, that's all.
I think I, and so I wanna apologize because I intend, every intention of reaching out before tonight, but failed to do so. I, and I want to make clear, so as a homeowner myself, who has chosen to raise my family and children in Binghamton, I can absolutely understand the interest in expanding the lot, expanding the yard, having a garden, planting flowers, the community space. As an elected official, however, I do also take very seriously my responsibility to consider the housing needs of of all city residents, particularly city residents without stable homes, with homes in uninhabitable conditions, and without homes at all. So any decision I represent tonight, I want to be clear, is not at all a personal decision against your interest. My primary concern actually lies with the side lot program itself, because as far as I can tell, there is currently no protocol within the administration of that program that involves assessing sites that are available for redevelopment potential. So no process by which to consider, you've represented that that site previously had a 13 unit residential structure on the property. And so without the opportunity, and this goes for the side lot program at large, not just 193 Matthews, and is a concern that I've represented on record before. Without that protocol, what we're doing and making each of these sites available once the properties are demolished are effectively reducing our housing stock and then limiting any use in perpetuity to green space. So, so again, I wanna represent not at all, not at all personal. The side lot program itself is something that I'm looking into. I have no intention necessarily of eliminating the program, but want to see the addition of that protocol so that we know that any site that's made available, we've assessed and acknowledged that we that it's not possible to redevelop or build additional units on, again, because of the, the housing needs of others within the community.
Any other council member have any other, anything they'd like to add to the discussion?
I would be curious and open to hearing more opinions.
In what regard?
I, I would, I would say that I'm unsure how to vote at this point, so I'm looking for a stall tactic while I reflect, and it would be helpful and valuable to hear additional thoughts.
So I'm comfortable sharing. So I agree with, with a lot of what Councilmember Rathmel said, right? We're in a housing crisis and the decisions to be able to, the decision to sell a lot that could be used to house folks who, you know, are living in hotels or don't have, have quality housing, right? We should be considering that. However, I think that because the side lot program does not have, right, all of the parameters or guidelines in terms of what lots can be used to be built on, and because those structures aren't in place yet, I personally don't think that, that it's okay to not allow a resident who is willing to use that property for a good purpose, not to do so because we haven't put the structures in place. And then I think about how long will that process? So I do agree that it needs to happen, but I also think about how long will that take? One, are the resources available to build new constructions? Two, and then what happens in the meantime, right? And so if there are folks here willing to use that lot in a positive way, I'm in support of that. With future thoughts and planning of how do we reevaluate and reassess this side lot program to make sure that if there are vacant properties that can be used to house or residents that don't have adequate housing, I'm also in support of that, right? But if we're gonna say no and then have that lot sit for three years or two, you know, however long without a plan, you know, I'm voting in support of this for that reason. So that's my thoughts.
I, I agree. I agree with you. I mean, I think we've kind of, me and you, Carl, kind of discussed the same thing, but yeah, I, that's one of the reasons why it's something positive in the neighborhood, so. But I do also think we should go back and revisit kind of how they're processing and how they're coming up with the program, which is which, you know, we can do that, but I just feel like right now, like voting no on something where it just sits, it's just not when someone is wanting to do something with it, I, I think that's positive, so.
I think everything that you both have represented is completely fair. And I want to make sure that I'm stating again on record that we have requested from Mayor Cram repeatedly that a plan be developed and established and a protocol established regarding the use of sites upon which properties have been demolished and made available to the side lot program. So I, I agree, what you're saying is fair, certainly have no intention of penalizing residents who are interested in using the vacant space, but this is not a new request. And I, I mean, I understand that the, I mean, if the onus is on us to develop that plan, we can certainly do so and introduce it, but the implementation lies with the executive department, and we have to see the collaboration and the follow through on that. And I wanna make sure that that's clear as well.
Anybody else?
Yep, I, I've got a lot of thoughts about vacant lots in general and how the, the city manages them or doesn't manage them and the side lot program. I don't, I don't think it's currently in the, the best state possible. And so I echo a lot of the same sentiments that Councilmember Rathmel has already shared. I think it's also worth noting that every time there's, there's a demolition and the the side lot, the side lot is adopted, there's a, a reduction in taxable, taxable property, and ultimately, over time, when we have all of those demolitions that don't have new developments there, it lowers the tax base, or shared by the whole city, and then like makes it harder for the existing properties if we're not at the same time reducing our, our budget. So that's, that's kind of one of the complexities that I, I think kind of gets lost a lot of the time when we're talking about demolition and redevelopment or the lack of redevelopment. So, yeah, I don't, I, I think the city could be doing a, a better job of marketing vacant lots and making the public aware of like what is available if you wanted to build a single family house or a duplex or whatever else. But I don't think that lack of, I don't know, good, good programming or, or management should stop the, the sale of both 193 Matthews and 31 Travis. So yeah, that's some of the beginning of my thoughts about vacant lots. But ultimately, I, I, I support this, and I'm sure it's probably a relief to the neighbors to not have a poorly managed property on their block anymore. So it's, but it is a major priority for the city to, to do redevelopment and infill development, and there's now funding for that through the state to, to fill in places that have created vacant lots through residential neighborhoods. So it's kind of sort of a catch 22. We need those vacant lots in order to do the infill development that there's funding for. But I don't know if we have, I haven't seen an analysis that demonstrates where, where the opportunities are for the infill development and how much money it would take to do those projects. So because we don't have that information, I'm, I'm okay with supporting the sale.
So I guess is there, is there some sort of growing consensus here that there's a sense that moving forward on these that we're already in process? Good, and then otherwise some sort of request to the executive branch to pause further advertising of side, side lots until there's a plan in place?
I have asked the clerk to look into what pausing the side lot program would entail. Again, not necessarily for its elimination, but for the insertion of a protocol that responsibly assesses redevelopment potential.
I'm in support and agreement of that. I think it's necessary.
Alright, well, I feel like I'm ready to vote. Thank you.
Is everybody else comfortable with moving ahead to the vote? All right, Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmill?
No.
Councilmember Matavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you. That's seven zero.
I now recognize Councilmember Rathmill for the purposes of seeker concern in introductory ordinance oh twenty-five dash thirty-two and ordinance to authorize the sale of thirty-one Travis Avenue.
All right. Thank you, Council President. The following seeker motions are in reference to the legislation before us, introductory ordinance oh twenty-five dash thirty-two, an ordinance to authorize the sale of thirty-one Travis Avenue. I make a motion to declare city council as lead agency under seeker.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have an emotion and a second. Can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmill?
Aye.
Councilmember Matavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you. That's seven zero. I make a motion to identify the action as unlisted under seeker.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Can we do a roll call?
Councilor Rathmill?
Aye.
Councilmember Matavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray? Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you. That's seven zero. Right. I make a motion to issue a negative declaration under seeker for the following reasons. The proposed sale will not conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations. The proposed sale will not impair the character or quality of the existing community. The proposed sale will not have an impact on a critical environmental area. The proposed sale will not impact traffic or infrastructure, energy use or water and sewer infrastructure. The proposed sale will not negatively impact important historic resources. The proposed sale will not result in an adverse impact to natural resources, erosion and flooding, or human health.
Having a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have an emotion and a second. Can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmill?
Aye.
Councilmember Matavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you. That's seven zero.
Seeker moves forward. I now recognize Councilmember Rathmill for the purpose of a motion concerning introductory to ordinance oh twenty-five dash thirty-two and ordinance to authorize the sale of thirty-one Travis Avenue.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt introductory ordinance oh twenty-five thirty-two and ordinance to authorize the sale of thirty-one Travis Avenue.
A motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion and second, any discussion?
I only intend to reiterate all of what I represented in the prior discussion.
I think if I recall from the, this lot's discussion, it's in an industrial area and would not, has no possibility of being, housing would not be ideal for housing because of it being an industrially zone.
So Travis Ave being actually my district, because it's on the other side of a Veer Street from you Nate. Um, yeah, that is basically an industrial area and any houses in that area, no different for Montgomery Street, Whitney Ave for Nate, are grandfathered in and they will not be building any new houses on them, any of those lots.
So I do recall that and I appreciate you representing that. I do recall that. I am aware of that as well. Again, my issue is with the side lot program itself and that's the, the statement that I want to make sure to clearly indicate.
Anyone else? Hearing non-Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmill?
No.
Councilmember Matavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you. That is six one.
Moving on to introductory resolution R twenty-five dash twenty-four, considered in public works, I'll hand it over to Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Make a motion to adopt introductory resolution R twenty-five dash twenty-four. This is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Williams Auto Group for the purchase of four hundred Court Street.
I will actually second the motion myself with a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Just for, just to reiterate, this is to, actually, I was hopefully gonna ask you. So are we purchasing the, uh, lot for a dollar or is it?
The option is for a dollar. And then it gives us essentially the rights to purchase, um, under the option for that two hundred seventy-five thousand dollar amount, I believe is what is listed in there.
So we aren't even making a purchase of property, we're purchasing it, eh, or no, we're, we're voting on an agreement that would allow us the potential to purchase.
Yes. So the city's looking to secure, um, funding and do the design work for the pump station there. And this is sort of the first step is get the option to be able to get in, do the, the testing that we're gonna have to do, um, do the design work and, and get the ball rolling with everything.
Okay. So we're, for this resolution, we are looking to, uh, vote for an option to purchase, uh, four hundred Court Street, which is gonna be a parcel that was owned by Williams Auto Group, uh, specifically to develop a, a pump house to help with some of the flooding issues on that side of, uh, Court Street. So it's to help mitigate flood issues. Well, that's all.
So seeing that it's my district and I grew up over there for years, anytime there's been flooding, when whether it was Jack Sherman's or Williams puts up the Jersey barriers to protect the cars, all the water pools in that aspect of our Court Street. So all the people who live on Broad Ave, Moeller, Louisa, all the way up to Ely, Ely Street and even down to Oliver, they all end up getting flooded down there. So this pump station, in theory, it will take the water, pump it under the railroad tracks and directly into the river to stop flooding on the lower part of the east side. Anyone else? Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathmill?
Aye.
Councilmember Matavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you. That is seven zero.
We will move on to communications from council and I will start tonight with Councilmember Middleton.
Oh, okay. Oh, I wasn't ready for that. Okay. Um, uh, I get no, um.
I mean, you always tell us you represent the best district, so you should go first.
I do represent the best district. That is fine. That is fine. That is fine. Oh, yeah. So second district, our, our Thursday meeting is canceled, uh, which is tomorrow. Um, just, uh, cause school's out, not sure if people are gonna really attend, so we're gonna cancel this month's meeting. Um, I don't really have anything tonight. Um, just, um, reach out to myself if you need anything, have any questions or concerns. Uh, and I'm always here for you. I usually have something planned, so I'm just like kind of out of it. Thank you, President, uh, Dundon. But, uh, like you did say, uh, the second district is the best district. So thank you.
That's why you're number two, but we'll go on to Councilmember Murray.
President Dundon, um, so for first word residence, I just want to offer a reminder about the Neighborhood Watch meeting. That is the second Tuesday of, uh, every month at the senior center, um, at two twenty-six Clinton Street. The, uh, next one is scheduled for May thirteenth. I do want to encourage folks to attend if they are comfortable and also let them know that, that you, you know, you all can reach out to me. Um, please look out for, uh, the flyers with the QR code that you can scan to share any concerns or any information you would like me to have in addition to just emailing or calling. Um, I also want to share that, you know, with the weather getting nicer, um, we will be planning some neighborhood cleanups. And so I'm looking for feedback from folks if they have input in terms of like specific areas that you'd like us to, um, to start in. And so I'm just looking to make sure that I can get some feedback, um, from constituents and encourage them to, um, attend the, the Neighborhood Watch monthly, uh, meetings.
Councilmember Rathmill?
Uh, just one upcoming event, the Binghamton Tenants Union is hosting a tenant town hall on the southeast south side, specifically at Webster Street Park at six PM on Thursday, May twenty-second. So if you are a renter on the south side, the Binghamton Tenants Union is, uh, looking to hear from you.
Councilmember Matavetsky?
All right. Blue bag update. Um, I, I did swing by, um, the store that I, uh, is interested in selling blue bags. Um, still trying to get them, uh, contract in hand so they can sell them. Um, they also have the same owners own a store on Clinton Street. Um, so hopefully there will be some new vendors for blue bags. I've put them directly in touch with our treasurer. Um, so hopefully that will actually get them to the point of having a contract. Um, really would like to close some of the holes, the blue bag deserts, as I've been calling them, uh, in our community. Uh, we had, uh, shooting in Saratoga. Um, so that's unfortunate news. Uh, if you have knowledge relating to the crime, please contact the detectives, uh, BPD detectives. If you have ideas, um, concerns, things that you would like to talk about, um, not related to the specifics of the crime, please reach out to me. I would, uh, love to try and see how I can assist and, um, improve and drive, uh, the community's ideas forward. Um, I have an organized, uh, Greenway cleanup for this Friday. Um, I saw on the news that, uh, DOT cleaned up the segment that I was scheduled to clean up on Friday, so I'm working on adjusting that, uh, with our Parks Department and the Friends of the Greenway. We're looking at, um, some alternatives. Um, but everyone who RSVP'd, I have your emails, so I will, um, let you know how that may slightly be adjusting. Uh, Discovery Center has their, uh, free admission night and art show, May second, from four to seven PM. And I want to highlight that there, there's gonna be a new dental exhibit that's opening up, a dinosaur dental exhibit. So, um, yeah, so there's a free night and there's gonna be a new exhibit. So, uh, put that on your calendar. Uh, PAL, PAL Camp, uh, Police Athletic League, um, they're still accepting applications for a free summer camp. Uh, and they have busing, um, multiple stops in the south side. I, oh, arena, so the next traffic board meeting, uh, will be, uh, voting on the arena streets requested to be exempt from alternate side of the street parking. Um, everyone on Arena Street should have received a letter from the executive branch. Um, if you could CC me on your responses, that would be great so that I can follow along with the communication. Uh, please reach out as well. Uh, lastly, oh, no, not quite lastly. South Side Neighborhood Assembly has their cleanup on May third. And in the morning, I believe it's nine AM to noon. And then now lastly, uh, Blocks in Bloom spoke at our last month's, or this month's, I guess, uh, South Side Neighborhood Assembly meeting. It's, uh, run through Cornell Cooperative Extension. If there's a block with five or six houses that are interested in putting gardens in particularly in the front area, whatnot, um, you can qualify for two, you get two mentors, uh, plants, mulch and compost. Um, so that's a pretty cool program. Um, I have some details with me somewhere, I think, um, that I can share, uh, just since, uh, you guys are interested in that. And I'm looking, uh, to see if there's communities, but they, you do need to fill out the paperwork by the end of April for that. Um, so for any of these topics, if you want more details, send me an email, um, or give me a call and I would be happy to follow up with you. Have a wonderful.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Council President. Um, just a couple of things. I'm gonna be doing a training for Good Cause, um, on the twenty-ninth at the library. So that's next week on Tuesday, six PM, uh, Brim County Library, uh, in the Decker Room. I've been fielding questions via email and phone. I'm just trying to compile those in case anybody else has those questions. Um, there'll also be, uh, an attorney from legal services that'll help, help field questions if anybody else has any. Uh, second thing is the Thursday next week, the, on the first, uh, North Side Neighborhood Assembly will have the mayor in attendance, uh, at six PM at Centenary Shenango Church at four thirty-eight Shenango Street. That's all.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Um, just like to mention that, uh, Department of Public Works crews have been out, uh, on the streets, uh, with the new hot box that we acquired, uh, this year, uh, patching, uh, so they're, they're getting to all of those really annoying potholes there, but also, so if there's anything that just has been missed in other blocks that have been, been tackled, feel free to call or email. Um, and then also please be careful, uh, because they are literally crawling down the streets, um, hole by hole, uh, to do this. So, so watch out for them and, uh, give them a wave and a thank you. Uh, they're, they're out there fighting the fight against the potholes, so.
So three years ago, on April twenty-first, not only my district, but the city faced a tragedy and the loss of the life of a child, Eliza Spencer. Um, I want to mention that tonight because the fact that it is an unsolved crime on our city streets, literally a couple hundred feet from my house doesn't sit well with me. I can't imagine any parent in the city it sits well with. And I, I just, I, I don't want her name to be forgotten and seeing that this is the week of the anniversary of that tragic, tragedy, I did want to talk about her a little bit in my comments. Um, I do like the fact that the mayor pushed the police department to increase the reward up to fifty thousand dollars. I believe it was at thirty-five thousand dollars. We are moving forward and working with the family to get the plaque up on renaming Fairview Pool. But it's just the, the fact that it's unsolved and no one has come forward when somebody absolutely has to know something, um, is heartbreaking. I mean, the fact that any child loses their life is heartbreaking, but the fact that her life was stolen from her, it just, that, I'm not normally a one for a loss of words, but at that, when that comes to my mind, I am. And I just don't want her to be forgotten and I, just her family to know and the people in the community on the east side and who run the Eliza Spencer Blessing Box. Just want them to know that they will always have my support. I believe they will always have the support of this council and all of the community. Other than that, I have nothing else to say. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.